Okay. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Bethel Planning Board. Today is Wednesday, December 13th, 2023. This meeting is scheduled for 6:00 to 8:00 o'clock. We would need a majority vote of the planning board to go beyond 8:00 o'clock. With that in mind, we have three items on the agenda to consider this evening. A building permit in the historic district for 54 Broad Street, Bethel residences, a 38-unit condominium complex in under-site plan, and Northern Forest Center's proposed redevelopment of the former Garing House into an eight-long-term rental unit. Before we proceed, I'd like to remind everyone that all questions should be directed to the chair. I see that we have one. Hi, Jim. Good to see you. Have you guys all had a chance to take a look at the minutes? All in favor? So, the first item before us is an application for a building permit in the historic district. You don't have... Do you have any communication? We counted on you for that block. So... Is anyone here from the... The building permit in the historic district? Not. Hi, Sarah. So... Should we move on then? Maybe he'll... We can reorder him?
Yeah.
Do you want to help on reordering the agenda?
Yeah.
I'll make a motion that we move the application for 54 Broad Street to the end of the business... Oh, business. End of the agenda.
All in favor? Okay. So now our next is Bethel residences. Mr. Donovan, are you the spokesperson?
Would the introduction kick quicker than I thought? But yes.
Yeah, I know. I know. You're throwing me off too.
Blizzarding out there.
I don't know. There's some... I know this is our second go-around here. I know, Mr. Everett, you weren't here when we did... Okay. Jody, you weren't here? Okay. Oh, okay.
It was done a lot... From what I can see, you did it.
Doesn't feel like it, does it? Okay. Tony, go ahead.
Should this go, right? Camera's on me. I can just talk from right here.
Sure. Yeah.
Okay. Tony Donovan. Good evening. Thank you for this evening. Portland resident and Realtor who has been engaged in Bethel Station development for, I think, the best part of 10 years. I think it's actually a little longer than that. My interest originally was in both the project that the state of Maine and private developers have done for multi-use development that included a station for passenger train service between Boston and Montreal, which is what attracted me here in the first place. Around 2015, but it may have been earlier, I approached the owners about the original development, and they engaged me to find users for the different parcels out here. So that's why I'm here today. We started with the theater. I think that was one of our successes. In fact, I get dated because the theater closed right about the time I got engaged in this project. And we brought in the people that now own the Gem Theater, Wayne Beth, and then Juwan, who's a great successor with this. So that was the first one. After that, the Bolin Alley, which we just had a great dinner, by the way. Again, considered a success. Dunkin' Donuts, and then two undeveloped parcels. One was sold to a local party with plans for residence development that's next to Dunkin' Donuts. And the other was to a well-known investor from Oxford who had plans for retail and possibly a grocery store. And that would be what we call the Snowman Lot. I'm sure you know what that one is. So I just want to note here that adjacent to the Dunkin' building, there was originally approved, town-approved, six-story hotel. I think we talked about that a couple of years ago. So then last, of course, most impervious parcels is the seven-acre parcel that we bring to you this evening. Although it's the gateway to Bethel, in some respects, the gateway to Sunday River, there's been a lot of interest over the years, but the site was limited because there was wood chips used by the Bethel Station developers to level the site out by the Parkway. The presence of this sawmill prevents the development from most of the property. So during the time I was doing the marketing here, the town of Bethel, some of you may know this, received the designation by the AARP Network of Age-Friendly Communities. Age-friendly communities being places for bringing people together, older people together, so everybody can age in place. When that all started to happen, I said, well, maybe we can take this parcel and meet some of the housing needs that are being described and desired around here. So I purchased, along with Jerry O'Connell behind me here, the property, saying, let's put a project up here. It's a walking distance to the village, short drive to Sunday River, and adjacent to what will eventually be a passenger train station, hopefully. So our building plans need to be done in economical fashion due to the limitations on how much the land can be used. The sandy soils that we could use require a type of foundation that I will allow, let my engineer describe. But it is important to know that it has an extreme cost to put that foundation in. That helps to go up, but not out. Again, because of limitations of the property. Our original application, as was just mentioned, was approved with a waiver by the town on height based on those factors. The original development, that the original development had that six-story hotel approved, and because of this type of soils, required this type building permit. Unfortunately, our timing was poor. We did this all through the pandemic, and the pandemic interfered with almost every aspect of moving forward. Delay caused us, many parts of it, to miss our approved deadlines. We sought an extension last spring, and we were turned down for a variety of reasons that you may be aware of, and might be the same anyway. So tonight, I'm going to introduce you to our engineering firm, Kelsey Biller here from Walsh Engineering. On the application itself, our architect, Tom House, is here to describe the changes made to meet the town code on height. We're reducing the height of the property to 35 feet. Our counsel, Jason Dennis, is here to assist if there's any legal questions related to the proposed use that might come up. And my colleague and Bethel Development sponsor, Jerry O'Connell, is here and will address any concerns that we might be able to do. And with that said, I think I'm going to turn it over to Bill Walsh from Walsh Engineering.
Thank you, Tony. Again, I'm Bill Walsh with Walsh Engineering. Is it okay if I stand?
Go right ahead. Yeah.
We are responsible for the site engineering on the site. And they brought this plan forward to you back in 2020, I think it was. And we just thought that 2021. The project is at 23 Cross Street. It's a 38-unit residential condo building that's being proposed. And as I said, this was approved in January 2021. And as Tony said, the approvals have expired. What we are bringing forward to you is essentially the same project. We really haven't changed it. It's really just an update of what's there, short of some adjustments that Tom's going to talk to in the building itself. We have updated the traffic study. We've updated the wetlands delineation. And we have updated some of our other permits, which are our main DEP general permit, our main DEP permit by rule, and our Army Corps permit as well for wetland crossing of utilities. So 7.0 acres site is bound by Cross Street, Mechanic Street, which is a paper street here, Main Street out in front, and Parkway Road on the top of the page as you're looking at it. It's primarily vacant, as you probably all know, except for one building that exists on it. There is one curb cut that exists right down here off of Cross Street, which is what we intend to use, as I'll discuss in a minute. The wetlands themselves are what you see in green. So we have some wetlands down on Cross Street. And we have some in the back here, both of which, for the most part, we are avoiding, except for what I'll talk about in a minute, a small crossing that we have to do for utilities. We have done a geodetic investigation on the sites. As Tony mentioned, there are some sort of soil conditions out there based on previous uses. Basically, what we found was that they used the sawdust and the wood chips from the operations in the area, and they use those as film to sort of mound the site out. What that means is, from a delivery perspective, it's very hard to put something on that because it wants to settle. So it's kind of a bit of a challenge from the soil standpoint. The northern portion of the site, which is this section, and actually this line right here, is actually within the 100-year floodplain. So it certainly limit our building to where we have it proposed. And I'll show that to you in a minute. There is a wet pond, as you probably all know, across the street here that was built for the development to take stormwater, and we're directing our stormwater to that. So the proposed project... Switch to the next one. Is this. The blue that you see here is the actual building itself. Again, 38 units. The density of this, when we run the actual density for the site via the zoning ordinance, we can actually do 49 units, but we're actually doing 38 here. So we're doing just what is allowed. The building has a footprint of about 20,300 square feet. And we are proposing parking around here and access to the backside of the building through there. There is a future phase of this development, which is right down in this corner here. And we're not going to be asking for approval of that at this time unless we have to come back in the future for that. We're concentrating right now just on the condominium. We have 130 parking spaces here for this, which actually does account for parking for these buildings in the future. So there will be more parking actually probably constructed as part of this, but it will sort of set that up for future approvals and development. The traffic, so we updated the traffic study. Maybe that would be an issue. And that has come to show us that we have 22 peak-hour trips, relatively small in the world of traffic. And all intersections that were studied around here are all still remain level of service A, which is the best level of service. The project will be connected by sewer and water. The sewer actually is this one that comes in here, which is where we have to cross the wetlands slightly to get the sewer connected where the stuff is out there. And water will be connected as well through this line right here. It will come up and connect into the building. External lighting will be provided throughout the site. It's all LED lighting. It's all dark sky compliant, like you pointed downward. And there will be a dumpster in the back here for the facility itself. That dumpster will have a screen built around it. The landscaping, we've done a pretty robust landscaping plan, which you can see in the darker circles here, all the way kind of throughout the building, both in the front and the back, in which way you look at the building and throughout the parking lots. So we've got a pretty extensive landscape plan proposed. As I said, the floodplain is in this area of the site. We have actually filed a conditional letter of map revision, which is a CLMRF with FEMA, that allows us to build this just slightly above that floodplain elevation. But we're just barely on the edge of it. But we did file that to be sure that we're okay. And that letter of map amendment, if you will, gets updated once it's constructed. Stormwater, there, as I said, there's a wet pond across Parkway. And the stormwater will be collected via a series of catch bases and pipes that's brought here, over across the road, and into that wet pond that exists on the other side. That pond and this particular parcel is all part of this larger subdivision, which was approved by the DEP as part of the segmentation and development permit for this area. And that, when that was done, it was assumed that this site would have 1.9 acres of impervious area. But we're only proposing a little over two acres proposed here. So we've actually reduced the amount of impervious area on the site that was originally conceived and permitted through the DEP. And therefore, it does have capacity. The wetland impacts, as I said, there is a very small wetland impact right down here. It's going to be, it has been permitted. Essentially, it's a crossing. So what we do is we go in and remove the top soil and the wetland soils on the top, set those aside, dig the trench through, and restore that back to its original condition. The other issue, I guess, that we talked about here a little bit are the soils. And with these soils, and because of this, what we found is there's as much as 15 feet of wood chips that have been placed here because it's really deep. And again, as I said, and Tom can talk a lot more about this than I can, but, you know, buildings sink if they're not appropriately supported. So they're using geopiles. That geopiles are going to be part of this foundation plan. So it's quite different than what you would see in sort of a normal construction, concrete foundation. These are going to be piles that are driven down into the ground. So it makes the site kind of a little different, a little more challenging, I think, to make that work and make sure that this building can be supported. So I think with that, I think I've touched on most things. I talked about the other permits, I think, already, and we filed a little bit. So with that, I think I'll turn it over to the architect, Tom House.
I'm not sure if you folks... Good evening, madam chairman. My name is... My name's Tom House, architect, architect for the project. On our survey, I don't think we even wrapped the topic with rendering. You've got the elevation, but not the rendering. I think the rendering will help a lot easier because it's powered up in a digital perspective. Madam chairwoman, we have at least one new member here. And I wasn't quite...
Two.
Two? Okay.
Yeah.
And I wasn't quite sure. So I bought the old rendering that was approved before. Can I show that first? You can see the differences?
Sure.
Does it make sense?
That would be good, yeah.
So January of 2021, we got this approved, I agree. And this is what we had shown before. And we had the 38 units.
No, there's some extras.
And so, nothing's changed as far as the actual footprint of the building. So we have the 38 units. It's just still the same square foot area. And this, the old thing here, we did have the three stories. We had a waiver from the last year. I'm sorry, last year, in 2021. Last year, I think it was been last year, right? Not far along at all. So this is what we had approved before, with the three stories and the 35-foot. 35-foot back then was unclear, and it was to the median roof of this piece here coming across to the grade. Since then, things have changed, as you know, with the zoning regulations. So now the 35 feet is from the average grade to the ridge. In order for me to make that happen, I'm introducing a gambrel, a gambrel route here, that brings the ridge down to 35, actually, to less than 35 feet, to be able to make that work. And by doing that, you're getting that roof down to this level here by putting dormers in the roof for me, creating that half-story. But the footprint, I can say, the footprint's not changed, just the height has changed the story that goes. And you folks didn't see the floor plan before. Would you like to go over that a little bit too, or... I guess that's a yes. You've got the main entrance here on Bill's elevation. This is sort of situated as if it was on the site plan. So if you pictured the site plan here, the entrance to the main building is this way here. Okay? Which is right through here. This is a port across here where cars can drive in, drop people off, and then park. Where would you like to go? So that's the orientation. The exterior, this is that exterior, a garden space here, which he showed on that as well. So you're entering here to a large formal lobby here. You've got a community room here. Residence is down here. You've got an exercise room here, then residence is down here. On the first floor, and these three units here and these three units down here, they have their own private garage. So it's a one bedroom with a private garage. I'm sorry, two bedrooms with a private garage. And the rest are...
One bedroom.
I'm sorry, it is one bedroom with a garage, apologies. The rest of these are basically two bedrooms apartments. Third floor, second floor is similar, except we don't have the exercise. But I'll show that in a second there. The second floor, we have all the units flanking side. We have a lounge area here above the entrance. And here we have private storages for each of the units. So wherever you go, whether it's a condo or apartment, you never have enough storage. So we're providing extra storage for the residents here. Again, they're all two bedrooms here. The third floor is the same looking dish. We have these storage spaces here in the middle, two bedrooms here, except on these here, on the outside here, we have three bedrooms. One, two, three. Give it that more of a... That's the top floor. And that's where you get all most of the views. So we want to emphasize you can get more space up there. These are the black and white elevations to show you. You can see the dormers here. These here are next to your sort of pergolas, if you will. These are lining up over the porch areas, but they're more, I guess, and so forth. Just going to find a way to not enter the building. Other than the roof form, the rest is the same as it was before. You can see the gambrel on the ends. This corner here changed a little bit from what we had before. So we did keep 35-foot elevation. It's kind of smaller here. 34 foot 6 inches from the grade up to the ridge. 34 6. I believe you have that in your packets. And we still have the black roof here from Mechanicals and so forth. And you can see a little dormers here in the background. You can see how the roof comes down here on the right. I think that's it for me, I think.
Thank you. Before we proceed, I have to ask the board what your pleasure is in viewing this. Do we want to look at this as site plan or subdivision?
I think we should do it as site plan.
Do you want to make a motion?
If I could join in from a legal perspective. What's happened is this. This, under main law, subdivision is dividing land into lots, as you all know, three or more lots in a five-year period. But it's also three or more dwelling units within a building, existing or new, or on a lot. So you'd have freestanding condominiums or something. Those also are subdivisions. So you can have subdivision by lots, subdivision by dwelling units. When you get something like this that requires site plan because it's a large-scale development and also subdivision because it has dwelling units, you wind up having to deal with two somewhat duplicative application processes. So developers approached the legislature back in 2018 and said, if the planning board finds that their subdivision ordinance and their site plan ordinance are in alignment, the site plan is at least as stringent as their subdivision ordinance, how about if it just goes through site plan for these multifamily dwelling properties? And so back, that was passed. That's in 38 AM R S A Section 4402, subsection 6. And that's under that authority. This board determined back in 2020 to review this development the first time it came through only under site plan. Your site plan ordinance contains all of the subdivision criteria as well as site plan. So when you go through the standards, you're going to reach them all anyway under site plan. And so I think it's a fair statement that your site plan ordinance is at least as stringent in all of the environmental and land use criteria as your subdivision ordinance. You made that finding before. You're certainly entitled to make that finding again if you so wish. And then the applicant is just going to be here for site plan approval. It will be exempt from subdivision, as it was last time, as state law allows. So it's a fundamental thing to think of right at the beginning.
In getting ready for this meeting, I was thinking about this, and I wanted to ask you. If, let's say, we decided to see this through subdivision instead, but then down the road, I know that they're talking about, you know, restaurant, maybe some retail, would we have to convert it from subdivision into site plan?
No. This portion would be, would get both.
Okay.
And then you look at the other aspects of that through site plan. I don't think that would be a problem. So, but that's a fundamental thing. And you might want to just take a look at the decision from back in 2021 because that has the motion right on here on the first page.
They wouldn't have that.
You don't have that?
They didn't have that. I'll read the motion aloud. And if you think that it covers what you want, then you can move it, second it, and adopt it and go forward with that. Under 38 AM R S, section 4402, subsection 6, the planning board has determined that the site plan review ordinance meets the requirements of section 4402, subsection 6, paragraph A, because that ordinance sets forth a process for determining whether a development meets certain specified criteria, which includes criteria regarding stormwater management, sewage disposal, water supply, vehicular access, and which may include criteria regarding other environmental effects, layout, scale, appearance, and safety. And so this application for a division of a new or existing structure into three or more dwelling units is receiving only site plan review and not also subdivision review by the planning board. That was the motion that was made and adopted and was on the front page of that approval back then.
I will move that.
Come on, repeat it.
Okay, you second? Okay. All in favor?
Don't go enough about it, okay? And what's great is you don't have to do a roll call for it on this one.
Oh, that was awful.
I watched a YouTube video there along.
Oh, yeah. Okay. So our agreement, we're being, this is site plan. The next item we have to look at is standing.
And I have a few. I don't know if this is fully understanding or complete application, but there were quite a few things I found that were inconsistent or I felt like outdated that need to be looked at.
Maybe we get into substantive review because once the board starts going down the path of looking at the substance of an application, see if it meets, they are at that point a pending proceeding, and they are grandfathered from changes in law, not that they're being suspected. But what might be a good idea is to put it on the path of standing jurisdiction and completeness. And then, once you get to completeness, then you can start looking at the substance of it. And everyone's right to fix any ordinance that happens. I'm just picking out loud. It might be better to just go through the procedural stuff first before going into the standings.
Well, some of it is. I mean, some of it's, I think some of it is applied standing.
Okay. Is there a deed or an option or...
There is a deed. But one thing throughout the application is it's referred to as Bethel Station Partnership, Bethel Station Resident Development, and the residences at Bethel Station. And they're all LLCs, and it never outlines who is part of the LLC, which we always make everybody do that because we want to make sure we have the majority holders here, or at least a letter that says whoever is speaking for them is appropriate.
No.
It's not.
And that became a question last time by trying to, the performance guarantee, because we weren't sure who the party was.
Right. And the other is, I feel like their financial standing letter is outdated, because it is dated the third of, I'm sorry, March of this year. And I, as a realtor, I feel like it looked more like a a pre-qual letter than it did a qualification for financial standing. Where else? And then on one section, it says they're under contract under a P and S. Section three, property is currently owned by Bethel Station Limited Property. Applicant is under a purchase and sale agreement for the property. A copy of the current deed and the purchase and sale agreement are enclosed. So I'm not sure who we're dealing with here.
And the financial letter says there was a closing in July of twenty twenty-one.
And there is no purchase and sale agreement here?
No, purchase and sale for twenty twenty-one, there is for two eighteen. Two thousand and eighteen, I'm sorry.
But what did you mean by P and S, Sue? Is there, is there, are you under contract to resell the project?
No, no.
We don't know why.
That was an opportunity. I don't see, I'm looking at that too, but that was the original application, but we purchased, we purchased land hired for the last approval, which even before the application.
Maybe there's just some old stuff in here that didn't get, how do you pack it?
Yeah, is it in here?
There is. Yeah, the first, look in the section three, the very first page says you're under, you're under a purchase and sale agreement. And then there's two thousand and sixteen is the deed that shows up, but back in the financial capacity letter, Franklin Savings says they helped you close on it in, what was it, twenty-one? So I can't, I don't see that purchase and sale in here.
Bethel Station Limited Partnership is who we purchased property from. The purchaser, I think it's in his deed, is Bethel Station Residences Development LLC. And the, I apologize, I don't see the purchase and sale. I guess it has a big little deep right.
Yeah, Tommy, it's kind of weird. It says the applicant is under a purchase and sale agreement for the property. A copy of the current deed and the purchase and sale agreement are enclosed.
Dated. Okay, so that is not correct.
It's a Walsh Engineering.
Because what, what you see here is the deed to us. I deed Bethel Station Residence, though now it's in, in section three, dated March twenty-third, twenty twenty. And then you see the previous deed, which is Bethel Station Limited Partnership, who we purchased it from, enclosed in on March twenty-fifth, twenty twenty.
So just your cover page was not updated. But we don't have anything in writing which shows who the principles are of the current partnership.
There's a letter from Mr. Donovan, and there's also a letter showing that Anthony Donovan and Gerald O'Connell have stake in Bethel Station Residence Development LLC.
In, on the prior table contents in the very beginning section.
So.
The annual meeting, etc.
So the applicant, just to be sure, is Bethel Station Residences Development LLC. That's who has title to this property.
Correct.
And, and the registered agent is John Hurcott, and the two members of that LLC are Anthony Donovan and Gerald O'Connell.
And they have equal shares of?
At this point, yes.
So nobody is, is anyone named as the managing partner?
Tony is the director.
Tony is. That, I did see that in there somewhere.
So just help me out here. Who did you purchase this from in June sixth of two thousand and twenty-one?
Well, it was the original guys. It was the holdovers. It was, the name and there's a trustee, John Moravec, who was a
Okay.
Partnership. I think they sold one piece out there, but they're the ones who were selling all these properties. And it was a couple of names. But we bought it from this partnership.
Okay.
That's a, that's second.
Okay, so last time you were here, you guys didn't own it, but now?
Yeah, we owned it by March twenty twenty.
When were you here before? When did we first look at this? Was it nineteen?
The final approval was January of twenty-one. I think it started about COVID summer.
Not important, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I think that prior to our coming year, we owned it.
Okay, 'cause Franklin Bank's third letter just says June sixth, twenty-one is when you purchased it, so. If that's incorrect, I just wanna let them know.
Actually, yeah, we purchased it, solid held a note till June, a couple months. It was a discharge, but it was.
Yeah, the discharge I didn't see on the registry deeds until like October, two months ago, but I don't know if that was a backlog or what. So yeah, I think it would be really beneficial if the name remained the same throughout the application, if it's Bethel Station Residence LLC.
Bethel Station Residences Development.
Development, sorry.
It should be all the way through.
I mean, Sue, if we're, I get concerned when we're basing our actions on documentation that has errors in it. So we already know that you got a page in here that says you're under purchase and sale agreement.
Oh, I just found another one. Is that, is that in your arm?
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's, it's.
Still says it's under purchase.
So I, for one, I don't know what the right format for that is, but that, that needs to be cleaned up, because we're, we can't act on inaccurate information. So that may be just a note, note by the right format is, write a letter indicating this is the this is the correct information that should be considered for application.
Correcting that. Part about standing, and similarly, the, the letter regarding, for Franklin Savings Bank doesn't once name Bethel Station Residences Development LLC and just says the client.
I know, but that letter is not.
Be helpful to have something more kind there backing.
That's, that's, that's not an issue. Did you say starting here twice?
I just found it in section one on the first page under project overview. Bethel Station Residence is currently under a purchase and sale agreement for the subject property. And I think it's referred to. But I hate to see you take this entire book, but, you know, when we do.
A letter, just clarify.
Yeah, just something.
Please ignore the phone.
Yeah, I was gonna say, you know, so once I rip this page right out, you wouldn't need it.
Yeah.
The cover page for a section three, do you throw that away? Because the next page shows the deeds. But if you see it in multiple places, we'll have to do it on the cover.
And I think I would like to see a more robust financial capacity letter dated more currently with your name on it.
Right, yeah. And then the
It says you have demonstrated capacity and ability to secure approval. I think you need to probably move forward with approval. From Franklin, sorry.
You're just looking for, you think we should have some stronger language? From, is that which?
Well, it says that the top residence is at Bethel Station, but it needs to say.
Be more current.
Okay. Okay.
Mr. Welch, the, or Tony, either one, can I go back on the size of the lot? Is it seven? I think I'm seeing some conflicting things, sorry.
I think we're just trying to do standing right now.
I think we're just trying to, we don't wanna get into the.
That's fine, that's fine.
But make a note of that, of what your question is.
And, and it may be clarified, I'm just not quite.
Okay. All right, I know, it's a lot.
Perfect.
To digest.
So the letter of financial capacity for Franklin Savings Bank is not acceptable?
Tony, I would just go through everything in here, make sure it doesn't say it's under a purchase and sale anywhere. And then you have B F A, was that Richard Allen from Franklin Savings? Oh, from Franklin.
Not a problem. This is the letter that was approved last time.
Right.
Is there. I guess we'll get a review. Not, we're not gonna get approvals for finance, for a hundred percent financing. They would get approvals of you. This letter.
Well, maybe it should say pending, pending approval on the committee board.
And then to put your name here, the accurate name, not client.
Yeah, I talked to Richard. I mean, if you get update that, it's not gonna be a problem at all, because it was fully funded for this project.
So are we ready to entertain a motion on standing?
I think we need those things. We're losing. We're just standing, but that's just me.
Those things, okay.
Entirely, if you want to proceed.
Okay.
Big picture, will you be going through public hearing?
Most likely.
So what you could do is, if you're next meeting.
In the site walk would probably be the next thing.
Sure, the site walk and schedule a public hearing. Before the public hearing, make sure that evidence of standing has been submitted in the updated financial capacity. Make those motions and then go into the public hearing proportion of it.
Okay.
If you, if you wish.
All right.
That's one way you can handle it.
Can you make a note of that process? Because you know I'm gonna forget it.
Do you want us to move the motion that we're requesting that in advance of the?
I don't think you need to move that. I think folks know that in order to make those findings and go forward, they'll have to.
How about completeness of the application?
We got a few things outstanding.
Yeah.
Standing, so.
Right? Yeah, right. Yeah, it's gonna be the same.
Standing, completeness, and public hearing will be the only matter whether for the next meeting it sounds.
Okay.
And one of the things would be go to completeness. Is there an updated approval with the adjustments made by the state fire marshal's office? Is that required or?
Nothing's changed as far as state fire marshal would have gone anyway. When I spoke to him in the last, um, last go-around, he indicated to me, Tom, it's, it's part of financing, state fire marshal had nothing to do with it, but he still provided a letter anyway. And nothing's changed. The US, anything's stayed the same, except for I adjusted the height of the building to meet that criteria that was outstanding, or that, we got approved last time, but we knew that was an issue from last time, plus it changes on regulations to be more specific as far as the height goes. Other than that, anything else is the same as before.
And then the other thing I would ask our attorney is, how do we deal with the fact that the, our town fire chief is saying that he will not sign off on this, because this is a three-story building, and the limitations of our code require it to be two point five stories.
A good question, and here's.
And we cannot, we can no longer waive anything with regard to the fire chief. His recommendations must be followed, the ordinance says.
Understood. The fire chief is denying it. It wasn't entirely clear, just said it didn't meet the building height. But the building height is thirty-five feet and three point, uh, two point five stories. I, I understand you thought, asked for a legal opinion on that issue with regard to story.
Who has asked for that?
I don't know, many municipal associations ask for legal opinion.
Is that true? We are asking?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, sorry, prior to the meeting, in my communications, I consulted with MMA about the actual definition of a half-story.
But what I'm not understanding is this building is three stories.
Yeah, maybe. Not necessarily. So the
What's understanding?
The Bethel ordinance does not have a definition of half-story. And so I believe that is why an opinion was sought from MMA. However, the opinion from MMA does also not provide a definition of half-story. And I think what you have heard from the architect with regard to the gambrel roofs and roofs, and he can chime back in on that, because that's his area of expertise, is that that change to come within the height requirement also makes that top story a half-story. Now, you could ask architects, engineers, and every town in the state of Maine, and get a definite definition of half-story. I've actually looked at some, including the town, uh, the city of Auburn, and it would meet that definition, because it deals with when there's a, a curb or gambrel roof and where it becomes a certain height. So there's an inordinate amount, amount of definitions for half-story. And since we don't have one in, and the code that we're working with today, I don't, I don't, well, candidly, I don't see what the basis and the ordinance would be to say to the architect, what you've told us is two and a half stories is not two and a half stories, within the ordinance. People can have their personal opinions on that.
But your plans describe three floors, so.
Yes, you could have three floors and two and a half stories. Also, if we're doing math, we can round up anyway. Two and a half would become three in math, but that is sort of in jest. We don't have a definition of two and a half in, in the Bethel ordinance. We have a definition only of story. And if a half a story has to mean something, then it can mean maybe part of a basement, like a garden level where you walk out, right? Attics can be half a stories depending on what their uses are. Uh, it does not have to be unfit for or not available for human habitation. In fact, you know, a number of towns in the city of Portland and other ones that I've looked up, because I wanted to see what do some other towns do, don't make that exclusion. They don't say half a story means you can't live there. It deals with, you know, where, where does it become five feet or six feet or seven feet along the angled roof? And you get to a point where some towns have four feet, some have five. And then it depends on what percentage of the floor space that you can walk on, essentially you cannot bang your head on, because of where, within that percentage of the floor space, is it at a certain height? The ceiling. And on angles, obviously, that is on a bell curve. It goes up, and at some point, it gets to the right height, and all of the floor beneath that is not essentially counted. And if it's the right numbers, it's a half-story. So again, it depends on if you act, ask an architect or an engineer or, or a fire chief, for example, or a town manager in a variety of different towns, who are gonna look at a variety of definitions and ordinance. So as I personally sit here on behalf of the, the client from a legal perspective, me listening to the architect and not seeing a definition specific in this town that says otherwise, I would argue that there's two and a half stories. Now, obviously, there's the, the waiver issue, and so I'll pivot slightly to address the, the fire chief's concerns. His, and I just had it, sorry.
His letter.
And his memo, so he sent an email originally that said pending MMA approval, I've essentially got no concerns and I'd sign off on this. And so the MMA response only talks about a, a story, not a half-story. But in his memorandum of November thirtieth, he just simply says that this time this prod, project does not meet the town of Bethel ordinance, is therefore does not meet the requirements of the fire chief. You can meet ordinance, or you can get a waiver or a, a variance or some other equitable relief from that ordinance. And so I, I certainly can't speak for the chief, but if his concern is it doesn't meet the ordinance, if equitable relief from that ordinance is granted through a waiver, which has been granted before, I believe on motion maybe specifically made by the town council at the time, because the board was debating on how to word that, then that makes sense that that relief be granted again. And of course, if it's granted, then the chief would. the chief would not have the same concern because it meets the ordinance because the relief from the express application of it has been granted by this board. So, I know that was wordy, occupational hazard, sorry, happy to answer your questions further.
Well, I'm concerned, we have a new ordinance since Tony was here before, that says we cannot waive.
Doesn't...
Am I correct?
It doesn't say we can't waive, it's under 8, 148, I didn't read the book.
Yes.
Well, that's been...
Under site plan review, or...
Site plan review.
I'm just going to add, I...
Yeah, what does it read?
It says the fire chief shall review all plans and consider the availability of fire hydrants and/or fire cisterns or other provisions for fire protection services to include the accessibility of the road for fire equipment. The development shall meet the requirements of the fire chief. As far as waiving it, that would probably have to be dug into more, I think there's certain things that you kind of cannot waive.
I would feel uncomfortable waiving this without hearing from him.
Well, in the definition of waiver is relaxation of the terms in this chapter, from application requirements or performance standards or special regulations granted by the planning board because of the special circumstances in the site, such application is required is, or because standards do not be applicable or would be an undue hardship as defined under the state variance law. On the applicant and if modified would not adversely affect the abiding landowners and the general health, safety, welfare of the town. So, there's nothing in there that gives the fire chief, you know, absolute say, under your definition of waiver...
We understood, I mean...
Let's look at it this way, there are two ways to go about it, I don't have a memo for you for tonight, and what we could do is each put together a memo and that's another consideration for the next meeting. But when you're taking a look at what an ordinance says, and the first thing you do is you, or state law, whatever, you just, you look at, what does it say face value? What does it mean? If it, as far as definitionally, there's a definition for story, and it's basically anything between four and ceiling, and if there's some usable space there under your ordinance, it is a story. So, the half-story would count as a story, okay, if that's true, then anything over the two stories would wind up being a three-story building, and you don't allow three stories, but you allow two and a half, and all that that definition of story would allow is two stories. So, why does your ordinance say two and a half? And so, when people are looking at an ordinance to see, what does it mean, the court doesn't like ignoring certain things, or treating terms or measures as surplus, it must have a meaning, and they try to, the court will try to interpret an ordinance to give effect to all of an ordinance, not just ignore parts of it. And so, what does half mean? And that's when you start turning to a dictionary definition, a commonly understood definition, and you can take a look at some of those, we could discuss that tonight, or we could talk about that more next time, and you know, be better prepared to discuss that if you'd like, whatever your pleasure is, but it seems to me that the definition, that MMA's opinion is limited to what your definition of story is, and it's fine as far as it goes, but it leaves a half-story just sitting in your ordinance as being there as a measure, 2.5 stories, without telling you, what does it mean in Bethel? So, I think at that point, the planning board can look, you can go with MMA's opinion and just leave it out and not deal with it, but you could also look to see, okay, what does half-story mean? What's the commonly understood meaning of a half-story? If you look at dictionary definition, you might look at what some other ordinances in the state look at, and determine for yourself what that should mean. And then, if you make a determination that this meets the height, and the ordinance that might influence what the fire chief says, who is also looking at your ordinance? You have the right to determine what your ordinance means in the context of an application.
What would you say the language that says the requirements of a fire chief must be met? So, he says, my requirements are, this cannot have three levels of living space, I'm not sure what the right words to use anymore are.
I understand.
What do we do with that?
Let's work at that, I think that's not something we should decide tonight.
Okay.
Let's, I think, all parties can, you know, put together something and have that for the board's consideration at the next meeting.
Would it be appropriate to ask the fire chief to attend the next meeting?
He was going to attend, but he was not attending.
Okay.
Fire chief is certainly always welcome at any of these meetings.
Maybe that could be helpful.
If I may, just for one point with regard to the fire chief, it was on Friday, October 20th, he had sent an email that says the fire department is all set with your project as far as the total height is concerned, so he was satisfied with that. And so, we've got the total height, and then we have this question of third story, half story, two and a half stories, and he says, once the town hears back from MMA on the definition of half-story, an official letter will be written, submit your application with the fire department's approval pending MMA's legal opinion. So, what that sounds like to me is that he was, the life safety and fire safety was concerned, and what MMA's legal opinion is to half-story or not, I don't know how that would impact his life safety opinion, because if you're okay with the height, how does, no offense to you and myself, but how does some lawyer saying it's a half-story versus not a half-story change his opinion of, hey, looking at that building, at that height, fine, just because we're going to call it a third story versus a two and a half story? So, as I read that, he suggests, but obviously, having him to the next meeting, you could get it directly from the board's mouth.
Right, I mean, in other words, is his, yes, we need to know beyond 35 feet, what is the nature of your concern that prompted the letter we received with our asking?
Right, because as I read that letter, if MMA had come back and said this building is two and a half, then he, you could read this email as he totally approves it, because it's pending MMA's legal opinion, so it's just what they provided, that he then is suggesting it might not expressly comply with the terms.
So, I'm thinking that the half-story is more of a storage, an attic, some things like that, I couldn't find anything in Maine to say what a half-story was, so I went out and looked elsewhere. And I looked, where was it, Montana, and, there were three or four states I looked at. Half-story means a partial story under a gable, hip, or gambrel roof, with wall plates of which on at least two opposite exterior walls are not more than four feet above the floor of such story, provided however, that any partial story used for resident purchases shall be, purposes shall be due to a full story. So, again, it's the same thing, is it, but how do you have a four-foot residence?
Well, okay, I took...
I mean, honestly...
Not to jump in, you know...
Throw your little kids up there, I don't know.
Well, suppose, Marion's definition, I'll look it up right now...
But that was Montana.
I understand, Marion Webster has one.
First letter.
And, that one, let's see, sure, half-story, an uppermost story which is usually lighted by dormer windows and in which sloping roof replaces the upper part of the front wall. I'll give you Kennebunk's if anybody is interested, because I did look for mine. That story of a building immediately beneath a sloping roof, when not more than 50% of its floor space, can accommodate a seven-foot ceiling. So, you could have, I guess, 57 feet here, but all of a sudden, sloping, and then, a half-story may be used for any purpose that is permissible for a full story. So, that definition is one in which you would say, okay, if it's sloping and up roof, in theory, I live in a house, heck, I live in a house that was built in 1809, maybe my floor where my daughter lives, she's eight, would be a half-story because it's slants, and you get side attics. I think I might have invented that term, I don't know, but you have that storage space in the side, which, love, those Christmas decorations goes in there, bedding for the guest bedroom goes in there, suitcases go in there, but our guests can sleep there, unless they get on top of the bed and they're Michael Jordan and they're trying to slam dunk something, they won't even bang their head on the seat. Well, you could have a Dutch colonial, you could have a, you could have a cape with a dormer cape, you have knee walls in that, and you do put the bureaus in all, built-ins. Bitterford, for example, defines a half-story as a space under a sloping roof which has a line of intersection of roof decking and wall face not more than three feet above the top four level, and which space, not more than one-half of the floor area, is finished off for use. So, you see this, again, cape, Dutch colonial, salt foxes, where you have knee walls and all, and that's the sloping roof. I'm not trying to make the applicant's argument for you, I'm simply trying to say that there are ordinances, and it's also in Sanford and in Bridgeton, an uppermost story in which a sloping roof replaces the upper part of the front wall, and that's also the definition in a Collins dictionary and in American legal publishing, which does these ordinances nationwide.
But it doesn't, this looks like a full third floor, there's no, there are no knee walls, there's no...
Sloping roof.
Sloping roof.
The third full, there's already, he's already shown condos and full bedrooms and everything on a full third floor.
I don't think any of that applies.
I mean, the dictionary...
Because above the ceiling of the third level, I'll call it for the moment, of units, above the ceiling, the interior ceiling, there's some space, is there not, or am I misunderstanding this? That's unoccupied space.
On the third floor, the E, which is right here, these are dormers, whether it's a gable dormer or a shed dormer, these are all dormers here, which is that right there in the background.
Yes.
So, you have the roof coming up the floor, it comes up here steep, and then it comes out the shower, that's the gambrel, so these are actually dormers. The roof line actually comes down here.
Okay. Roof line.
E, most easily. This piece right here, is right here.
So, I guess what we're going to table this...
And there's no units above that line.
Yes, there are, right here.
That's what's...
Just right here.
That's what's confusing.
So, there is a little bit.
It's within the roof form, but you have dormers out there.
Yeah, I knew that the design had the dormer effect.
Right, I understand that confusion completely, and so for me, it's one of two things, it's that it wouldn't meet a definition of two and a half, that's ultimately for you and council and whoever else, chief's the way in on some level, but then the second piece, which is the waiver piece, which was granted for, I think it was granted both for height and the two and a half floors, so this same project got both of those waivers granted for, I know your concern, Gloria, if it's okay for me to clarify by your first name, is, well, now we don't know if we can still do that because the chief got some zoning appellate, like appeals veto powers, essentially.
It went to a meeting in the section that this was changed, in the sense we had with the statement of the recommendations of the, the development shall meet the requirements of the fire chief, what does that mean?
Right, you've got to obviously argue that multiple ways. I could sit here and argue to you that it's just life safety, and it needs to have hardwired or interconnected smoke detectors, or it needs to have, you need to check your chimneys or heating every, these requirements, because if the fire chief is not empowered to make zoning amendments, and so if he says, I don't like it for something that's more zoning, unlawful, unreasonable, illegal essentially for him to do that, so, but that's, I'm obviously unbiased because I'm here talking to him.
And we have counsel to help us.
Right.
So, that would be my thought.
But it is very, there's a lot of difficult issues that swarmed around this.
Right.
But I would like to hear from the fire chief, because I feel like we need to understand why he has written this letter. You know, I think that he needs to be able to explain himself and explain to us his concerns.
So, maybe we can table this until that next meeting, and legal, our council on both sides can figure out, write memos on the understanding of two and a half stories,
would, would it make any sense that would the board entertain the notion that town council and myself have a call with the chief, so that we both hear from him before we can formulate our opinion? Maybe, I see the narrow-eyed shape there. More information I always like, but I got... That's okay, maybe I shouldn't be so obvious, but it's just a helpful proceeding, and it would probably be appropriate for the board to hear the chief's concerns in as well as me, rather than have a pre-meeting talk. No, I know, but for me, I wouldn't want to be ambushed by not having a clue what his premise is, and coming in, I can't possibly... We'll be a discovery in this. I'm...
Courtney will let him know.
Oh, wait.
I will tell them.
It would end up coming at the public hearing anyways, one way or another.
Is that, Courtney?
So, I, for the next meeting, then, we'll try to get standing and financial capacity cleaned up. I will try to have Mr. Jovary attend.
Yeah.
And then if those are all met, then we would move forward with a public hearing on the site.
You want to schedule the public hearing anyway, I think.
So, okay, because I do know...
You have to get notice of that.
I do know it takes time, I think typically it's done before a planning board meeting, is that correct?
Yeah, but thankfully, it's that time of year, I think we had a little time because, you know...
We do have time because there's no end of December meeting due to the holidays, so our next meeting is not until January.
So, should we, should we, can we schedule a site walk? Would I like to do that?
Can you do a site walk without standing?
We can, can't we?
It doesn't sound like it's a heavy lift to satisfy the standing piece, it's really a question of who's faced up.
Right.
So, if you wanted to go ahead and do a site walk, I'd...
We have two members who haven't...
Right.
Well...
We know they have standing, we just...
The documentation isn't clear.
You know?
Right.
We want it.
I mean, you could wait and be perfectly formal and then wait for your new year.
We wait, we could be standing in six feet or so.
I would like to suggest that when we schedule the site walk, that we do it as close to the next meeting as possible, I don't know about you guys, but I might forget.
Fresh.
No. Yeah.
I think that's a good idea.
If I might, just before I forget, to have somebody let me know the specific concerns for cleaning up the standing issues, so that I can make a note of that, so that when I confer further, we make sure we address what those points were, if that's...
You may want to do it now because I see, I see the standing line from Deed to Mr. Donovan.
Yes.
So, if you guys have a break in that line, then I definitely went home directly because I can't convey that because I know what you're missing.
The project's...
Not financial capacity, just from Deed to Mr. Donovan.
It isn't, it's other language that's included in here, so on the, under the, what am I trying to say here? Under tab one, we've got something that says there's a purchase and sale agreement that should be cleaned, that page should be cleaned up.
That's at 1.1.
Project overview.
Yeah. And then, under right title and interest, you have a statement that says the property is currently owned by Bethel Station Limited Partnership, that's not true, and a purchase and sale agreement, and the applicant is under a purchase and sale, that's not correct. And then...
Tab three.
Yeah, and then something that should have been under number three, tab, eliminate in tab four, you should eliminate that purchase and sale contract, because that's no law worth of name, it's been exercised, and it's confusing. Yeah, and then, the other piece of it is, the secretary of state sheet is under number four, but it should be under tab three. So, there's, in those beginning sections, there's just some confusion.
And I'm a little more confused here. Did you say the purchase and sale is in your copy?
We've got to have an updated financial statement.
Yes.
Is it here?
It's on the line, it's on page 3.2.
Purchase and sale contract, do I, do it list here?
No. What section is that in?
It's under my tab number four.
Four.
And I don't, it doesn't even belong there because tab four is evidence of state, federal approvals.
Oh, yeah, here it is.
And that needs to go away, you got to check in there, deposit.
Yeah, right here, purchase and sale.
Under four?
Yeah.
It looks like that.
Right, right after, right after.
You know what, it is, it was part of the application to the DEP, that was done, that's why it's in there.
Oh!
It's not, it was part of the...
So, it's an exhibit?
If I might...
It's just messy.
Section three is specific to what it says in, and I...
And, and, and I could be, and I do understand, I mean, I don't want to be proven it for all checks, right?
I think you should have a quick.
I will do so, but it's really only referenced once in, on the first page of section three.
And, you know, it's also.
Where is it?
Right after.
It's in your product description, I think it's.
Project description and the.
If I may, for clarification, if something is there that there were concerns and confusion about, but that it was a part of a different submission to a different entity like DEP, if that's taken out, is that going to raise a concern of completeness? Because hey, we've only given, we've given you a letter that references exhibit A, but exhibit A is not there, so what in the heck is that?
If it was an exhibit as part of the permit, as part of the permit, then it's published be there even though it's not in the right place for what it is. I'm wondering what a PNS that was entered into in 2016 is doing with the PBR, permit by rule that was issued in 2023, but that's, that's me.
If it was given at the time, whether it should have been or not, it's still a part of the allocation, would, like exhibit, like cover pages or something that's, if it stays in there and say exhibit A, blah, 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 whatever it is that was attached to D, so that when you see it and you say, what the heck is this for, you can flip back and say, oh, they're not giving it to us now.
Some clarity.
But it's just a part of the full package deal.
Yes, because of all the other languages said you're under a purchase and sale agreement. I'm reading this and I'm.
Sure.
For our witness.
So we're going to take that page off. You said it was, I can't find the second reference.
Under your development description. Under section one, under your development description, very first paragraph to the right, currently under purchase and sale.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, those two places are the key places, Tony.
I think we might only do, we'll find, we'll look for any others.
Well, there are a couple places where it's, it says 40 units, I mean, you know, but.
We'll clean it up.
Clean it up.
At the next meeting, going along with what Courtney talked about, standing, completeness, this issue with regard to stories and the fire chief. Maybe we want to do the public hearing, do that and then go into the public hearing. But the idea is, if you want to advertise in the public hearing adequately by the publication.
So it's a public hearing, it's got to be like 5:30, can we start this quick, is that how that?
Public hearing should be held during the meeting. You have to, you have to be actually meeting in order to.
Oh, you should do it earlier, but that's.
Or you could start your meeting earlier.
Okay.
All right, I'll figure it out.
It doesn't matter, but we should schedule our sidewalk, because it's going to be, but I'd like.
The next meeting is January 1st.
It has to, yeah. Hope everyone's okay with doing a daytime one.
Losing all day.
Sorry.
But you can't do the sidewalk while it's light out, go to public hearing and have this meeting after this.
No, because the sidewalk's going to bring up, that's when we really get, believe it or not, we have more questions.
So, on the, are the great stakes and stuff still up there?
That's what I was going to ask, you know, what do you, what do you need?
Stuff to do this time of year.
Well, I mean.
Well, I know that could be, that could be, the ground's not frozen right now. So my suggestion is you get out there now.
You have to put lamps.
No, now during the day, out the great stakes and flag the daylights out of them so they're visible so that the guys, the snow pillows don't go run.
Do you remember the balloons?
Yes, I did.
The balloons probably might not last.
I might not get that far. We, we'll go through that process again if I remember where we shot. Yeah, I don't recall.
And that way, because I'd like to see it done, personally, I'd like to see it done now so we can see it on the ground because if we wait until the middle of January, we're buried in four feet of snow, it's going to make it hard for everybody.
Your choice, and we'll do it whenever it's convenient for you, except for what Jim said and what you said, too, if you want to do it close to the next meeting, you want to do it now.
I understand personal.
I say now because it's clearer to see.
You can see the ground, you can, you can see what's there.
Good point. So our next meeting that can.
Is January 10th.
January 10th? And we have room in that meeting to do this?
Yes, because any applications that have come in get put off until tonight's meeting is taken care of.
The other thing is getting into the holidays, I'm worried about people traveling, so when, what's your pleasure? It really doesn't matter to me.
Tony has to be here.
Wait, for the, for the sidewalk.
For the sidewalk. And by the way, very patient, I understand time, go ahead.
What works for you time-wise, early morning?
Yeah, you're convenient, absolutely, I go out of my way for this. I walk it out.
I can decide.
I'm going to tell you, one day, I don't, should I share my personal story? Thursdays I get my only grandson all day.
Okay, so, so no Thursdays.
Nice place to be. Bring him.
Bring him.
So do you guys want to try like next week? That'll give them time to stake stuff, hopefully there won't be snow.
Let us know.
Tuesday, Wednesday works for me.
Tuesdays, the 19th. So that might be better because they're, no, not Monday.
Not Tuesday. Wednesday works for me.
Monday, they're talking like two plus inches of rain, so.
Right.
It's not, so we might want to try.
Yeah, I've got to get a little bit of time to get the.
How much time do you need?
I don't know.
Ideally, it may be like Friday might work for me, and I guess the question is, what do you?
A week from Friday, then we're into the holidays. I saw you get here that day.
Yeah, that's what every.
What is, what do you need to stake?
What do we need for a stake?
Tony, you've done it before.
You know what, we're going to try to do it, and if we have to cancel, we will. You schedule it, next week if you want, and I know what we did last time, and I'll just try to walk you through the seating, just survey it by the gun. I'm going to find what, I see it already, it's already there.
And then assume you want to see the building, the corners, is that, is that?
I think the corner's in the building, yeah.
Those next Wednesday work for everybody on the board. That's for me. Later, I'd rather do it in a warmer part of the day.
Just daylight.
We got meetings starting at like quarter to five.
So during the day. It gets started at four, so.
We either do Tuesday or.
Can't be on Tuesday. Two or three?
Wednesday?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, want to do three Wednesday?
Courtney's trying to hurt these cats.
No, Courtney should have been this morning.
Wednesday, 3 o'clock?
Just Wednesday at 3, December 20th, sidewalk.
So it's, it's just about dark by 3:45.
Yes.
Well, a sidewalk, I wouldn't think.
It doesn't take us very long, just.
Especially if Laurie's right.
She'll run through that.
Yeah, Laurie will.
Perfect, okay, wonderful, I've got it down 3:10, Wednesday, the 20th.
If there's a problem on our end, put no stakes and we'll have to postpone, but we'll do our best to get that covered.
Okay, they're not still there?
Yeah, there are a few that, but we've done, they've changed it so mowing for their Christmas lights. I'll just, I'll just.
So 3:00, 3:00.
Yeah. All right.
Well, you guys are doing your cleanup, they have a question. Tony, I've got a quick question, you guys are doing your cleanup, and I'm asking because I think I misunderstood. The size of the lot is seven, seven acres. The, the building and the footprint of the building and the, and the parking lot, was it, did you say something like two something?
Two acres, yeah.
Okay. In the book it's saying, where'd it go? I got my finger on it, I moved it. 3.2 acres of development. So, I'll, I'll, if you're doing all your ducks on that.
We'll check it out. I think it's the, I think it's the future, I think that's the difference off the top of my head, I'll verify.
That's what I said, I, I was looking at that, I was just trying to.
I don't think they matter, so I'm going to say we're going by the book, whatever that says. Still.
All right.
If I might, thank you. This is why I can't put that in. Thank you.
I think Laurie has, did you have a question? Laurie has one last question.
And that's from the primary side. I know that this may change depending on what we do with the.
Minor?
Yeah. One place in your letter, you're saying a waiver request, a waiver is being requested, and then there's another place where it says no waivers being requested. So I just want to point that out to you.
Do you want to formally just move to postpone further action?
Yeah, we're going, yeah, Laurie's going to ask a question and then we're going to do that.
So, on tab, tab two, which is the actual application, there's a section here where you say no waivers requested, but your letter saying out of an abundance of caution, you're requesting a waiver.
It's under section two.
So I just wanted to point that out to you, okay?
Yep.
Clarify it. Okay.
Moving on.
Moving on to, would someone?
Are there motion that we postpone action on this application until such time as our next regular scheduled meeting?
Do I have a second? Hold on.
Is, just so we're getting clarification right, because the slipboard is going through the same problem, is it table or is it postponed? Because one takes it off the thing, Jim can help in on.
Table is a look at next time as far as the.
We just say table and it's fine.
Cable.
My, I just, I just want to throw one more thing out, it probably falls into the legal realm, but in the application where it says no waivers are being requested at this time, that's an accurate statement, our application is going in as, at the time we're not asking for, I think our legal counsel puts a mention in that if maybe we will ask for one.
Okay, is that, maybe I'm misunderstood what you're saying.
I just suggested we don't need to take it out of there because.
I did a second. Jim, second, all in favor? You okay, Bob?
Oh, that's okay.
All right, great, thank you.
Always being a confusing.
You have to drink a lot of wine and some crackers and cheese when you have to.
Yeah, didn't I? Good topic. Keep you out of politics. Happy holidays to you guys. I hope it's all going well. Great you. Everybody healthy, everyone a one to one.
That's what.
Great to see you.
Drive carefully.
Thank you.
You shouldn't come to these, but I'm going to think of all the things you have to do.
All right, thank you. Drive safe.
Thanks, Courtney.
You're right down in red, two and a half doors, I'll tell you, it's so good to see you without those damn palm trees behind you. On the zoom, I was like, it was this miserable time with you, it was so cold.
I changed it to this building.
Yeah, right. Good job, thank you.
I did.
Thank you very much. Tom is gone.
Thank you.
He's with us.
You can sit, because I don't feel like you stand or anything. I'm going to just sit in the front row.
I should probably start it, I can start.
Amy, good to see you.
Somebody must have nitted that thing, that's very.
Right time of year to need something, that's an idea. And then you can use that on Christmas, for Christmas.
And then by the time it's ruined, it'll be after Christmas. And I'll be out.
I hope this, hi Amy, I hope this goes. Sorry. We knew. Sorry.
I'm zooming now.
All right.
Well, actually I can do that.
Are you staying at dorm, Michelle? Oh, you're looking. All right. Welcome. Go right ahead. Are you presenting, Amy? I have you down as the agent.
I am. Rob, the president of the Forest State, is going to just get started and then I'll jump in and then we'll.
All right, good evening. Thanks for all the support so far to get through to this point. We're really excited to present this project to you. I'm Rob Ryan, I'm president of the organization. You know Amy, Patrick is our architect and other duties as assigned.
Architect, director of our commercial division at our company.
Okay, great. You may know, I'm says a forest state regional organization that does security economic development. This is one of seven redevelopment projects that we're undertaking across our forest state region. I would say we're particularly interested in this one, I don't say that in all of the communities, just to be clear, for the restoration of the property, the adaptive reuse, and particularly because of the location. The rest of the balance of the site also offers some, offers some really exciting opportunities, but really the fact that it's walkable to town, sits on 10 acres, sits between the school, town, recreational opportunities, the fact that the house is just an incredible piece of history and architecture, we're just really excited about the opportunity to have it back into community use and be a vital part of the tax laws in the future.
Yeah, so I'll just jump in to add that it was very helpful to get the findings of fact and we, hopefully all of you have all of that information that we provided in response to that, is that getting.
I do actually, thank you, Amy.
Yeah.
I will need a motion or an email that came from Amy, sorry, just responding to some questions that I had.
You make copies for all of us? Or you?
Amy, do you happen to have that? I can go print it off real quick, you guys are, I can print it off, that's fine.
Do we need it for tonight? Can we do it for?
Well, it will answer some of your questions. Okay.
I can print it off. Yeah, it was just stuff I had questions, you guys made.
Okay.
So you can keep presenting.
Okay. But just per the process, we did, we did come to an earlier meeting just in a communication format, just to say that this was coming, so I know that all of you have some familiarity with the project from that, and that was also helpful in hearing some of the things that you wanted addressed, to be sure, so pretty confident that we've been able to address all of those concerns and, and I think what I'll do is turn it over to Patrick to kind of walk us through the project.
I appreciate it. I'm Patrick Booth, I'm the architect, and so it's been a great project to work on. We have a lot of history with adapting historic buildings into new uses for future generations, and they do come with a bit of complexity and so forth, so this is one of those projects that's really near to our hearts and also that the fact it provides much needed housing for the community and really great to work on it. I don't know if anyone's been able to walk inside the gearing house lately, but the outside of the building in this picture you can see is, it looks, there's some degradation of paint, so forth, we walked inside, it's very beautiful, a lot of the original elements are intact, woodwork and so forth, and so it's really a gem, the treasures and kind of meant to the next generation. So to do that needs to, has to regenerate revenue, and the best use of that is providing housing, so that's helpful for, for all those kind of mutually beneficial goals. So we work with Northern Forest Center to develop a plan for the building, there's eight residential units that all work within the existing walls of the building and keeping[1722.22] and keeping all the existing characters of the space as well. You know, sometimes challenging to put new kitchens and bathrooms into a building like that, but we try to do it in a way that is both elegant but also meeting National Park standards for historic rehabilitation, which is an important criteria when you're utilizing state and federal historic tax credits. So it's a very paramount way to make sure that these projects work financially than they, because it is expensive to renovate old people homes. I just want to kind of go quickly through what we had submitted for the site plan. I won't need to go in much detail, I just want to give everyone a kind of a heads up. Let me know if the screen falls off for any reason. I'll be just looking at this screen. This is the property itself. You can see that the Gearing House is further to the north of the page, page left. It's, it's combined with the three other parcels, or total of about, I think about a little over 10 acres, and so the house itself is further to the left. I think the existing site itself has a lot of asphalt parking that's a little degraded. All of that will be removed and new parking and pavement will be put into place. The, the net impervious land would be the same before and after, so there isn't any increase in stormwater calculations and so forth for this first phase. So this is what we're proposing, essentially providing more legitimate parking spaces that are striped, two handicap spaces, so I believe 10 that are asphalt and then another additional 11 that are overflow parking, so that for the eight units, there's a plenty of parking for, for both the residents and the guests. We've also included some new sidewalks, some new features. Really, one of the elements of the National Park Service is make sure that the building has proper context, so we're giving this a lovely, and you'll see in later images of, drawings of landscape areas, giving it enough breadth around it so you're not piling with other buildings and developments nearby, it's giving its own kind of presence. This is a photo of extra plan, just showing how this and cut sheets meet dark sky requirements and things we do, ordinances. These are all prepared for our civil engineering awards, so I might not know specifically some questions, but I think I could, like Amy, with some of their things they particularly do. Demolition plan, this is just showing hydrology, where water flows, where it's going, so that it's properly addressed. This is the landscape plan, so this is churned a little bit, about 45 degrees from the previous. Some tree plantings in that nice wraparound, and then more tree plantings in this new Oculus here in the front. The original use by Dr. Gearing used a lot of herbs as medicines essentially, so we're doing a little bit of recreation of that with this garden, so it's been an homage to what was originally used for this building. And so going inside the building now, this is the demolition plan. It looks like there's a lot being removed, but those, those hatches are actually, I was talking about, nonhistoric floors and old carpets and so forth, those getting pulled up, and if there's wood below those, those are just getting refinished. But you can see there's a very small amount of actual walls inside being demolished. On the attic space, it's actually, those are all modern walls that have been built within the last 30, 40 years that have been, that are, that do have some milling and so forth, so that's the best plan available and replay. In the future, as, and there is some, the part of the design for this road here talks about some future steps, a further phase in the future from Northern Forest Center about creating more housing for the rest of property. That's not what's in the kind of purview today, but we did want to make some, this is a site plan, it's provided by a planning consultant that we worked with for town earlier, earlier this year, and how, how this connection can work to help support the rest of the development in the future. This is the basement plan, this is a floor plan, showing the units. We've been doing it in more detail if you'd like to study these, but essentially there's two two-bedroom units and six one-bedroom units to the building. These are the elevations. There were some questions about the skylights, so at the end of this, I'll show some, some supplemental data that we had shared. This is the response to some of the questions that was in the finding of fact, that's probably what you're referring to.
Yes.
So that's what this is. There's, there are three questions in there. One about skylights, which my next page will, will show. One was just clarification that we don't, we aren't suggesting any new projections, new canopies, and also that we clarify what the color of the building will be, and we have a rendering at the end to show what it will be. So these are just the skylights, very simple, the idea being that they're just very low profiled, so they don't really, they don't really stand out, but it's necessary in order to give proper light to these, some units that are inside the attic space on the, on the top level. And then here's the building showing those skylights more in contact, you see, they're, they're pretty innocuous and unassuming in the, in the grand scheme of things, and this also is something that gets reviewed by the National Park Service as well, so it's, if it's within their standards, and we've used these before, that they've been happy with those. And the last, here's the image, so the image in the upper right is the earliest image that we could find in the building. It was, and, and also through discovery, but peeling the paint, the lowest level paint is about an ox blood red color.
Interesting.
So we were looking to restore that color using historic color palettes from manufacturers, and removing some things that are added since then, so there's some shutters on the side of the windows that were not original to the building, so really just bringing it back to its original brandier and having a, kind of a beautiful asset for the town and for people to enjoy. So I think with that is the last I had. I don't, if there's anything else that I might have missed in the questions, happy to address those as well, but, you know, we're just really excited about this project and I hope you are as well.
Amy, I want to say something. We don't usually do like an intake, I'm not sure what we did with you that time, but it was so helpful.
I'm sorry, I missed it.
Yeah, it was, but that was, that was great, I just wanted to tell you that before, and that you kept us all involved. And now, I think that we need to, do we need to read something in?
It was, it was in their presentation, so I don't, I don't believe so.
Okay, but we.
But it essentially was just my, when I'm doing the finding of facts, I come across questions that you guys may have that I didn't find the answer to, so it essentially, I wanted to know, you know, the size of the skylights in the schematics. I mean, you may want to read it in, just so then that will be in the actual file.
I think we should, okay.
And then I also.
Did you make that this for all of us?
Um.
They went to the trouble to send it, I think they should.
Yeah, and then I also asked about if there's going to be any additional sidewalks way into the road, which there's not, and then I asked about if it was going to remain yellow or if the colors was change, were changing.
Yeah, just really starting to understand that.
Yeah, I know. I got here in 82, I can't imagine it anything but yellow, you know, it's like.
Yes, so yes, if you would like to read it into the record, so then I can make copies and have them at the next meeting, because the color are probably the most helpful.
You just submit it.
And then, I think you have to, yeah, I think you just have to make a motion and.
I'll make a motion that we read the communication from the architect. Did you, who answered these questions?
The architect.
Into the record, thank you.
Second.
All in favor? Are you going to give us all a copy of that? Um, I can do it at the next meeting. Okay, let's do that.
I guess there will be.
Yeah, um, what we're going to try to do tonight, it's really the same thing we just did with the past applicant, I hope it'll be quicker. We're just going to find standing. We're going to make sure application is complete and then we'll come to schedule a sidewalk. Didn't you get a question?
Back to the one with the side, with the, had to drive line. Right after I came.
The side plan?
Yeah, yeah, I think it was in those. So, Amy, when you, when you came before, you were talking about coming in off of Fairway.
Oh.
But all your stuff is showing where it ought to come, right up Broad Street.
Yep. Yeah, so the plan at this point is to maintain the access from Broad Street.
Okay.
For the Gearing House. When we get to another phase, we will be thinking differently about that, because there's different flow, different number of cars.
That's the better way to.
So, you know, one of the, I know we're going to be doing a sidewalk, one of the things that will be important for us to understand is that circulation from Broad Street, people will drive in this way, drive out this way, park, whatever, that, that, I think will be an important piece of that.
Then we need to do a sidewalk with several town members as well as the deputy fire chief, the fire chief.
The fire chief.
And we looked at the road, make sure that was adequate for service of the building. Building is also sprinkled and fire alarm, and so he was comfortable with the existing 部分of the road. We just need to limit up some of the trees that since overgrown a bit over onto the road itself. So that means, so this, this showing in light, because we're not planning to touch this phase, and then we were just planning that, part of the reason why this gracious turnaround is here, it allows for turning access of fire equipment apparatus and so forth, but also for people to kind of easily circulate in and out from Broad Street, but also if someone would come in Fairway Drive in the future, it was just that it would also be the same point coming in through here. Obviously, to be determined out what the final design of that future might be, but this design allowed for, for this first phase to exist wholly, then also the next phase.
So, are we ready to move on to standing?
Yeah. Um, just, so I think we have the D lead.
Um, I have the full packet of the LLC paperwork. I know previously we don't give you all.
Thank you.
20 or 30 pages.
Um, so.
But I do have that in my, I'm not going to hand it to you.
So, yeah, okay, so just, so we have this clear, it's the Sustainable Forest Futures Inc. is going to be the property owner. They are a subsidiary of the Northern Forest Center. You gave us the listing of the board of directors. Now, I, are both of those LLCs? I don't think.
I don't have any of that.
I don't, I have Inc. I don't have LLC.
Where'd you get all that?
Jim, that's just what you have.
This should be on half.
Yeah. Do you have this?
So, these are not LLCs, are they?
No.
You're, you're not an LLC in sustainable.
All I get is a balance sheet.
Is sustainable.
501(c)(3).
See, that's what I got, so it's appropriate to have the board of directors, yes.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to make a motion that standing has been shown.
There's definitely.
Oh, I don't have any of that.
Is that a?
A balance sheet.
It should be in there.
And I got a letter from Old Department.
How do you put plan B?
There should be the D in there.
The D is in.
I don't have any.
The D was on it, Jim. It was directed to these plans.
Yes.
Where are these plans?
Oh, those are out in the Jeep. I thought I left them in here.
That would be why.
All right, so there's a, so that we have a motion, can I get a sec? It was in, okay, all in favor?
Two.
All in favor? Okay, good.
Is Bob on that?
I think Bob.
But I think Bob's still sort of through some stuff there.
Yeah, I thought I did. It's rare that you do some new stuff.
So, this was a new package. Um, okay, how about? No, first we're going to see if this application is complete.
Oh. One of the things that I do need to have an explanation of is the financing for this. I know it's tax credit and the whole like, because, you know, we have to show evidence of financial capacity, and you provided the consolidated balance sheet of the Northern Forest Center, which is, but I'm going to be honest with you, I'm not sure I'm totally clear about how this is going to be financed.
We're self-financing.
Okay. So out of your.
Out of our assets.
Okay.
They're listed on the top of the page, whether they're cash or in short-term, right.
Was it just a finance, was it just your statement of self-financing?
Yeah.
We'll probably need that from whoever's holding your funds, like your, we don't need to know how much money.
Well, they gave us their consolidated balance.
Their director of finance.
Quite a bit.
Quite a bit of.
Right, but.
Detail that are.
But we, in the past, we refused that because anyone can.
Oh, self-generate?
Right, we could self-generate that.
So do you need a bank statement?
It just says, these guys have.
No, we don't want a bank statement.
We don't?
A letter from.
Good, but I, we don't.
Financial, the two. Okay, so Bankers Savings Bank is our holder, so we'll ask them to provide a letter, and if we can get the language from you, Courtney, that would be helpful.
It's not that stringent, it just.
I think, yeah, I, I can send you a copy of ones we've gotten in, in the past. So we, they might know what to provide. It's typically just a statement stating that, you know, they've reviewed the renovation plans for this property, 70 Broad Street, 77, whatever it is, and that you have the financial capacity to complete, pay for. Okay, all right, if we can just get a letter, that one can make sure we can have that.
Yeah, we've had people just send us bank statements, it's just.
I didn't even think.
A little uncomfortable. That would work business-wise.
But you're in 501(c)(3), so this is public, I get that, but I, I just want to make sure I understood.
I agree.
Yeah. And by the way, this cover letter, I really like this.
Which cover letter? Go back, I'm all over the map here.
The one from Woodhull?
Yeah, who did this?
Oh, Courtney did.
Thank you. I like the cover letter because it gets all the players, everything on one page, like that. So, do, are we ready to entertain a motion for the completeness of this application?
Yes. I will make a motion that the application is complete pending the receipt of a letter from Bankers Savings Bank.
One second.
All in favor? Okay. Now, the hard part is getting a sidewalk. I, I have one thought on this. I do not think that I'd like to do this the same night as Bethel Residences, because we're going to have a public hearing, that means we'd have to have two, I think we're going to have a public hearing on this one.
You guys need to make that decision.
And then we're going to, it would be just, we wouldn't, you wouldn't be getting the attention, I don't think, that, in the detail that you deserve. So, what is your timeframe? Of course, it's that time of the year, too. So, if we went the last meeting in January with you guys, are you okay with that?
And does that mean, in, in theory, if all went well, we would get approval that night at that meeting?
Right.
That would seem fine, I, well, construction wise, we're not planning to, we're also the construction company as well, just as a clarity, looking to start when, when the weather breaks, essentially in April, May. So, what we're doing is just working to get our titles out of the way. There is a, another element of, of the, the process to, to obtain historic tax credits, called a, a part two, which is a.
This is going to be good.
What?
This week is going to be, weather-wise, is it going to be good?
It's going to be the best we're going to get.
But if you're not going to see them until.
At next meeting is January 10.
Yeah, so.
Bethel Residences is coming, oh, to do the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Yeah, we could. Okay, Courtney's looking at me.
Can I just, this is.
She's giving me the look, something.
Like you're not trying to do something internally, right?
Well, just keep going on the.
Yeah, just the tax credit, just because it involves going through the state historic preservation.
We bet with weather until Monday. We don't know what's going to happen beyond Monday, that I know of.
Mm-hmm.
I.
Is there anything stopping us from having a sidewalk sometime between now and Friday?
Um.
Well, today's Wednesday, so at least Thursday and Friday, I, tomorrow I am very tied up. A Friday, I could, yeah, I could, they're parked, Friday I could do.
Is there something though, that like, I know you can't have both of them come to the board, but is it something, since people are available and the weather may not be good, that if you're going to do the residences on that three, could you do theirs at two that day? And then just get them all done?
I'd rather we don't do that, I think that's just kind of.
It confused, I think.
It's going to be hard with that and with pushing the weather, all we need is, if they're willing to move, if, if something changes for whatever reason.
Amy, you're here, right?
You're in town.
You're in town?
You're in here.
Just in general?
I mean, in general, yeah.
Yeah, I happen to not be here on Friday, but I'm clearly speaking, I am in town, yes.
So, I mean, so you wouldn't have to.
So, not to rush it, because I can't stand rushing.
I don't think you guys need to travel for this.
No, I can do a site walk.
What's... Not trying to rush it, 'cause I don't have time to rush this stuff, but what about tomorrow?
I cannot do tomorrow, I can't either. I mean, every... You know, there are...
I know, I don't have time either, but...
No, I mean, I have meetings.
I can't either. It's like I have a nine-thirty in Portland and I have one o'clock and then I have a four-thirty.
No, I know, I didn't say both.
So do you... We may not be able to make it around the weather, then? Do you keep it plowed out?
Yeah.
If we get snow. So maybe we should look at after the new year? Because after this week, we're going into holidays.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, then it's right, okay.
So, legitimate question in that, and I agree with that. But knowing Lori and her landscaping, is there things that you're gonna wanna see if there's not snow?
I wanna understand the circulation. You know, it's one thing to see it on a flat piece of paper, I wanna get myself acquainted with that and I can look at the landscaping plan on paper and feel very comfortable with that. It's the circulation part that I can't like.
And we'll be... They plow out the whole thing that's asphalt right now, so that'll be fine.
I'm not sure, but I think Woodhull has a reputation for doing all that kinda stuff very well. Am I correct?
Which, which...
Like the landscaping part.
Of course she's gonna say yes.
Well, they're architects, I mean, it doesn't hold.
Don't blow it, okay?
Well, we're a...
The answer is yes.
Construction manager, we hire qualified subcontractors to do the work. We have a good reputation with a lot of different people. Like Woodhull employees aren't physically doing the landscaping work, but like we manage a lot of people, the talent.
When I see your ads in magazines, they're basically landscaping.
Sorry? Yes, yes.
Okay, Courtney's getting us back on track. Site walk. After... Now, we're going after the holidays, so we're going into the first week of January?
Maybe.
They're not gonna be until January twenty-four. Do you wanna do it closer to their meeting time? Do you wanna do it in the next couple of weeks?
I would, if we're gonna do it close to their meeting time, I would at least leave enough time in there in case we have like a Star Easter. You know, we don't, you know, so that way we're not doing it two days before.
You wanna do the week before? It'd be my birthday. Ooh!
Get to celebrate.
Yeah, it would be nice, because we never know what's gonna happen if we try to do it.
Do you wanna do the seventeenth of January? So that'll leave you a week to make it up if we get a buzzer.
Sure, sure.
It's usually really cold out.
What day of the week is that?
Wednesday.
Wednesday, seventeen.
And are we doing...
Do you wanna plan on three? Would we work for you?
She's gotta get her cap.
What time of... I don't know, does anybody here on this board have restraints for the time of day?
Not that day.
It all depends on what happens.
On that date, on the seventeenth, on the Wednesday, do you... Does it matter what time?
Seventeenth of January?
Yeah.
Oh, man. Do a reminder. It is...
Until Wednesday.
Well, as of right now.
Yeah.
Talking too much in the future. Just getting all stuff sucked, 'cause you never know when you're gonna have a doctor's appointment or...
Spread that.
So, I'm gonna put Gary House, does that work for you?
Yeah.
On the seventeenth?
Seventeenth works.
Does everybody wanna do three?
Sure.
Okay. Three P M., January seventeenth, site walk, Gary House.
All right.
Perfect.
Yeah, I would want to have it on paper.
It will be on the...
The twenty-fourth, yeah.
It's January twenty-fourth, and then the board needs to vote to table this until...
I'll make a motion to table the application. And site walked in. Next meeting starts.
Second.
A second, all in favor?
Margaret's very welded.
Sue?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was... I thought you were...
Perfect. I think Amy is dizzy. All right, we could just do that.
About that meeting, the building?
We aren't gonna stop you from moving forward.
No, no, it's fine, these concurrently, I think that's...
From my opinion, in terms of just some of the milestones, not losing lots of time is super helpful, so, you know, if the weather holds, that's great.
Okay. Sorry to delay that meeting, but I just feel like we'd end up being overwhelmed and rushed to do whole projects.
Yeah, no, it makes no sense.
Okay, perfect. So we will see you January seventeenth for a site walk at three P M. If you can get me the financial letter before that, then I can send it out in your packets.
Oh, we're gonna tomorrow.
On the twenty-fourth.
They're used to it.
It's more just getting them through the system. Quick question, just read Amy's question earlier, which was, that day, the seventeenth, you will review again in full and either an issue eight?
No.
No, that would be at the meeting the following, Wednesday, the twenty-fourth.
Okay, that's what it is.
So the site walk, no decisions are made, it's just to look at the property and ask questions about where things are...
Mostly the exterior, because the site manager doesn't...
So the twenty-fourth is when you bring it back and give the full...
Corporate issues.
Yes, yeah.
It's mostly perking, landscaping.
And just, I probably won't be there, so there's, I don't think that you need...
No, I think Amy's gonna be fine.
But I just wanted, just to come up and express my support for the project clearly and appreciation of the process.
Thank you. Looked to meet you.
That looks fabulous.
Have you heard from any of the abutters?
We have talked to...
We have one here.
Probably jumping for joy, aren't you?
Hello.
I do.
Oh, hi.
I'm behind this big object right here.
Okay.
Well, you're both at Broad Street.
I'm with the...
And you're welcome to the site walk.
Fairway County House, one of his associations, big partners on Fairway Road.
On Fairway, yeah.
Okay.
You're welcome to the site walk, right? And we will see you there at the meeting on the twenty-fourth. We will have, probably have a public hearing.
Because it's a purely large...
You guys need to vote, actually, you need to vote if you wanna have a public hearing.
Okay.
Obviously, we've had hundreds of people through the building or whatever, I don't know.
Yeah, they had a pound, I missed it.
Yeah.
Seven hundred pounds.
But many people...
Should we vote on that now?
And Sherry, before you...
Okay.
Sherry, before you do that, just to build on Rob's point and your question about if you've heard from any of the abutters. We have had a lot of people through the building, many, many people. And I reached out to all of your abutters myself, so I have spoken with all of them except for Bob Chadbourne, but I did send him a letter and I haven't heard back from him.
He won't, he won't.
Okay, so just 'cause I knew he was that, you know, that cornerstone. But others I've talked to or I've at least heard back from, so... And I talked, we've...
Yeah.
The one I've talked to the most, because he is the closest there, is Scott Gould, and we addressed some of his concerns already.
And his was access parking, I talked to him as well.
Yes, and I talked to him and I know that he's talked to them, and I explained to him that if he needed to express any concerns, 'cause he's out of town, I believe, that he can submit a letter to communicate, but he said, you know, he was okay at this point.
Yeah. His biggest concern was less about what was coming and more about what's been happening, which is people driving through the property. So we put up some signs to try to... He said it's not better.
It would...
What's that?
It would probably benefit you to put up some barricades in some shape or form, even if it's just rocks on the backside, where they're running straight through the old lots and...
I think it's what we've done, what we've put up, I think, has...
Definitely helped.
Yeah, he said, he said he's seen a lot less traffic, people coming through.
Big snowstorm will help a lot.
Yeah, that'll...
Couple miles of snow.
Yeah. And also, before you vote on whether to do a public hearing, just so if anybody wants an annual report of our center, just you understand the organization I brought to you.
Oh, thanks.
I mean, I have plenty, but, so, sorry, go ahead.
So you said, we can't vote now because it's no how that works.
We table that... Where's Jim? Can we rescind our motion to table? Vote on that and then put it back in?
I made the motion, so I'll rescind my motion.
Do I have a second?
Well, the... For a second, it had to...
Me. Okay, all in favor, rescinding the table. Okay, and now I'd like to entertain a motion to have a public hearing on this project.
I'll make a motion to have a public hearing on...
January twenty-fourth.
January twentieth.
Twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth. I'll make a motion to have a public hearing on January twenty-fourth, if we can...
At our...
I would say at a regular meeting tonight, just because I think people will show up, and I think it's gonna be more to curiosity than...
Yeah, at a regular town, at a regular meeting.
Not in.
Would anyone like to second that?
I'll second.
All in favor? All... Would I like to entertain then a motion to table this?
I'll make a motion to table this application until it's... Until the January twenty...
Second. All in favor? Okay. Great, thank you.
I'm trying to remember from being a kid, and I can't remember if it was pictures or actually remember that color.
I never... I never remembered that color.
I remember it always as a presentation for us at the...
Eighty-two.
I don't believe it.
My brain is too fried.
Just a quick question, do you guys already vote on this application to consider it as a site plan? Or are you doing a site plan and subdivision? We're doing it... We usually don't vote on that.
These are not condominiums, they're rental.
They're eight units.
Yeah, no, but they're rental, they're not...
We're seeing it, it's on our paper, we're seeing it as a site plan.
So you may wanna vote on that.
Yeah, you may vote on it, it's a subdivision, and they actually did provide you the information for subdivision as well. So it's a site plan and a subdivision, are you gonna just review it as a site plan?
That's where our site plan is set up, so that it covers...
So, the next meeting, you may wanna vote before you start...
Okay, I'm confused by that. What's the aspect of the subdivision?
How to read it?
Three or more units?
Yeah.
Three or more units that are not separately owned?
But I'm hoping it has to be sold.
It doesn't matter. Nope, that is, it's correct, it would be a subdivision. If somebody has a four apartment, apartment building.
I didn't know that at a client...
But it's the same as what the council says.
Yeah.
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
State law allows for...
Right, allows it, but if you type a vote on the other one, you're...
We usually don't.
As long as it's...
We usually don't?
Because typically, we don't run into this. I don't think we've run into it since I've been here.
But Jim wanted us to take that vote.
Yeah.
We usually don't.
Because we normally don't run into...
Right.
Since I've been here, we have not run into multi-unit housing.
Yes.
Before us, we just have two tonight.
Maybe it's a big problem to have. Okay.
I've got a note to read about the...
Good to see you. Nice to see things are moving where they're willing for it. Moving where they're willing for it.
You have to take a vote, 'cause you...
Okay, so let's take him out.
Sure.
Make that a motion.
Oh, my gosh.
I make a motion that we continue on with the next applicant, since he sat through a painful two hours.
Yes.
Second then.
All in favor?
We will teach you how to record.
I know, okay, this should... Sorry, this is... Hi, John.
He said I'll have a broken finger or something. Tore my Achilles tendon.
Yeah, this is so much better, thank you.
You're getting the elevation.
Looks good.
We have a...
Good to see you, good luck with your project.
Do we need to...
Yeah, Michael could...
You, we can.
No, we don't have this.
Was it mine?
So, see...
I think I did.
They're coming back.
I know, I just waited.
Bob's looking for a new something.
Bob, what are you looking for?
He's saying he's missing an elevation.
He can read on mine.
All right. I, yeah, I propose that we just dive in. I think we know what you're doing and you're giving the presentation. Jim, do you have a question?
That's gonna be during... I'm gonna, I just wanted to ask, I think, one thing before we get going, because I know it's gonna get asked, so maybe we'll speed things up. There's nothing in here, unless I missed it, that says the window style and color. Did I miss it?
It says the existing ones.
Yeah, I don't think it says as specific. It doesn't say like an Anderson three fifty.
No, I didn't. If the other windows, if the other window casings are black, these are gonna be black.
You could put that in the...
In conditions, okay.
Yeah, and I believe the, I checked with Mike at West Main Supply, the windows they checked are white, which is what the current windows.
Okay.
Okay, that's it.
Yeah.
Okay, well, it says here, yeah, the windows mimic the existing ones in size and style.
It's just clarification.
Okay.
And then the... Can you explain, I think we missed it on here, one of the drawings, that the height of the addition will be eleven feet visually comparable, but I couldn't see anyplace in the drawing where it actually shows the height. It shows the...
Right here. Says ten feet.
Is that the old one?
That's an old one. That's...
Well, that was in my packet.
Well, that's the old one, that's why that was...
Maybe it was in Bob's, not mine.
I mean, you've got the, you've got the picture of the...
It's a three twelve.
Yeah, of the dorm, or the hip roof. And then in the drawing, you got everything, the measurements, but nothing showing height of it.
Well, doesn't he describe it?
Let's say elevation and it shows like twelve or is this old?
This is the old.
Still?
Yeah, that's how it's old.
That's old. How do I even talk?
I don't know.
Because some places it says eighteen by twelve feet and some places it says...
Yes, if the height is eleven feet...
Eleven feet.
Eight-foot ceiling with a three-and-a-half pitch roof.
Right.
Right, the one, Jim, the one thing I do, I need clarification from Mike on, is you're going to step down. So they are gonna be, it's gonna be an eight-foot wall, but it's a step down, so the full height of the exterior wall in a three twelve pitch roof would be fifteen feet max.
Okay. I'm just trying to...
So that's, that's what's not on, so the fifteen-foot height.
Okay, someone just wanted to add it somewhere.
Yeah, yeah. It's, we know it's gonna be down, but it just needs to be clarified in there.
Yeah, it'll be, the, again, last meeting told me that the wall studs would be twelve feet, because again, the step down, so if you've got the twelve and a three twelve pitch roof, it would be fifteen feet.
Maybe we just clarify that under one B.
Okay, you guys figure out where you wanna clarify that.
And I think the most important thing is, is that we're probably gonna sign this one.
This one.
Yeah, for site plan, and it's gonna show the height as long as it's not obstructing windows or over thirty feet.
So, on the findings of fact, it says eighteen by twelve, and on here, I knew there was some inconsistency, and I'm finding it. Eight, and that revised letter says eighteen by fourteen, so what is the overall dimension?
When I came last time, I was thinking fourteen. If I could get approval for fourteen, I figured I could always do less, but I couldn't do more. But when I had Bob redo the drawing, he said, I'm not going beyond twelve, so just...
So this letter is in this, what got crossed out here, I mean, this letter...
I did that, 'cause he took the...
Yeah, the deck off, but it's, it really is eighteen by twelve.
Eighteen by twelve, yeah, and there's no dash.
Yes, that was very clear.
Excuse me.
You're called, because it's a fight I won at home, so...
I know, I remember that.
I don't win that.
And we won't ask for you like this, you know. I can imagine.
It's a great day.
Every man...
He's here and he's still smiling, so it's something.
Okay, and the findings of fact say eight by twelve, so that's good. One-story addition.
I will need to change one out for the height when you fill that.
All right.
No, it's, that was where I was at.
And hopefully you can see in this drawing, you get a better look at the actual hip roof, which kind of mimics the bay window.
And you adjusted the window placements.
Yes, well, we figured out the interior, so I could figure out exactly where I needed the windows to be, and you got the dimensions right.
That's okay, I must have left that at home. I have paper all over my table.
All right, so would everyone, is everybody ready to start the findings of fact? All right.
So we're gonna modify the language when our number one, Sherry, where it speaks to the place.
Okay.
So we're writing it as fifteen, is that...
Oh, the height of the addition will be here, okay.
It will be fifteen, no more than fifteen.
No more than fifteen.
No.
Do we need to, do we need to say eleven with the three twelve, or do we care?
Well, it's on the, the eleven with the three twelve is other places on there.
It's on the drawing, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, yeah. All right, so are we all good with number one on page twelve? Which is page thirteen, that's the second page for us. Can you find elevation?
Sort of redundant, I think. Height of the... Relationship of the width to the height, oh, width to the height, okay, yes.
So you don't have a sliver?
No.
Does anybody have any questions on page thirteen?
Nope.
Is everybody agreeing with all the nets and the reasoning?
Yep. Yep.
You're good? All right. Can I get my attention to a motion about the findings of fact?
I'll make the motion to approve upon receipt of the edit we discussed on item number one.
Okay.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Okay? And now the motion on, do we need another motion for this?
Yeah.
For the...
To approve the project.
To approve the project, yeah.
The motion to approve the project.
Okay.
As submitted.
And would anyone like to second that?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Okay. I get blue, okay.
We better let Bob sign first.
He's got the only black pen today?
No, mine's red, actually.
Oh, you did.
Why is that important to Bob?
'Cause you need the black windows, you don't have black.
Black or blue, you actually...
I think it's blue.
It's always better, because then you know what your original is, as opposed to something that's been built.
I don't really care.
So, okay, just...
Perfect, so you don't get any follow-ups, I just put a letter in, but I think, did you already submit a building permit to the CEO? I think I started over there.
Yeah, I came in, I guess, you know, we have a code enforcement person right now, there's a secretary or something, but yeah.
Correct, so I am helping Kingston, so I can just shoo him and email tomorrow and let him know that you were approved through the planning board.
Okay.
And then I will send him a copy of your, um, send a copy of the application. Can I have your telephone number? Okay, so I will send that all up to Kingston, most likely he'll give you a call, let you know the price, and then we'll put all the stuff up front. Bring your seat, come in, leave your billing card.
Thanks, Courtney.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Thank you for bearing, went through this problem.
It was a great physics lesson.
Yeah, oh, so sorry, that was just complex a little.
My definition of a half story is a place where I bump my head a lot.